I'd like to call the meeting to order for the special city council meeting of June 3, 2023, 24. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria?
Yes, this time is designated for public comments on matters not listed on the evening's printed agenda. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom portal now. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, each speaker will have three minutes to comment with a maximum total of 15 minutes for the public comment period. Staff may receive direction, however, state law prohibits action on matters not included in the printed agenda. Once the public comment period begins, no further requests to speak or Zoom acknowledgements will be accepted.
Thank you. Due to having only one item on the agenda tonight, we will hear the public comment for item 5A. Now, I have five requests to speak, and according to public comment, it has nothing to do with the budget agenda. So it's all on public comment. So, and then, and then we will go to the budget agenda, and I have one person to speak on that. Okay, so Matt, Matt Lewis, Matthew Fawcett, John Mata, Scott Bramson, and Benjamin Ortiz. You did not want to speak on the budget. You wanted to only speak on public comment. Is that correct?
I want to speak right now.
No, well, it's not a matter of right now. It's if you're going to speak on something other than the budget, you speak at public comment. If you want to speak on items that are in the budget, then you speak on them later. So that, that was my question.
Ortiz?
Ortiz.
Okay, so put him on this.
Okay, okay.
So I can speak right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Watson, attorney?
Yeah. If you're going to speak on the financial matter related to the budget, you'll have to wait. You'll not want to bring the budget. You'll speak about something not on the budget, which is not an item that's not a budget, then you will speak now.
I'd love to speak on the ongoing negotiation process.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I, you know what, I'm just going to take all four, all four of you. You can just speak right now in the interest of making this very expeditious. Some of you may have to get up and leave. So let's just do it that way. Okay. Matt Lewis, Matthew Fawcett, John Mata, and Scott Bramson. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Patino, council members, city staff, Matt Lewis. So first off, I want to thank you for taking the time to have this special meeting. It does come with some frustration. We have been out of contract for 150 days, 250 days plus since we begun negotiation talks. And there was a year of education and, and talks going on before that with, with council members. So it would have been nice to have this done in a timely fashion. With that said, though, this is just simply a matter of priorities. As the lead negotiator stated, it's not a matter of finances. The money is there. It's just a matter of the priorities of the city and truly, City Council, your priorities. We need to remember, we all work for you. City staff works for you while they make recommendations. It's on to you to make the final decisions. It's unfortunate that I'm here speaking just on average pay. Some of you up there don't believe we deserve just average pay, and myself and my members are here advocating for just average pay of our profession, given the biggest city in the county, fastest growing in the state, we run the most calls. All this comes at a detriment to our health, physical, mental, and we proudly serve knowing that. All that we ask is the respect of being paid our due of, of an average pay. So with that said, Mayor Patino, you've been here longer than myself.
Thank you, thank you for that, ma'am.
Yeah, out of respect. But you've seen this financial forecasting year after year after year, and in all my time here, I can't remember when revenues have been up here and expenditures have been down here. It's always been the reverse. But every single year, it comes out, revenue comes in higher in expenditures. In the last 15 years, $220 million has come out of different funding resources to go into the LEAF Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund, and these finances have come from extra general fund money, other, other funding resources that, that come in. So the money is there. It's just a matter of, do you, council members, want to make myself and my members a priority and just pay us an average wage? It's all we want. We'll go above and beyond and continue to provide service to the city as we have the last 120 years. So we're looking to work with you. Thank you.
Matthew Fawcett, followed by John Mata, followed by Scott Bramson.
Thanks for your flexibility of letting us all speak and being in this meeting. Good evening, City Council, city staff. My name is Matthew Fawcett, and I'm a Santa Maria fire engineer. I love serving the city of Santa Maria in this role, helping citizens through their emergencies. I'm also grateful for citizens like you who serve in the political capacity, which covers so many budgets, policies, general planning, and so much more. It's a huge commitment to analyze the information presented to you, as well as doing your own research. So absolutely, thank you for what you guys do. That being said, I'm speaking to let you know that we're hopeful for a resolution and transparency of why we're still out of contract. I'm requesting a reflection of the history of how we got to such a below-market salary, as many of you have been serving for years in your position should know the history. My hope is that you review this current proposal of financial health of the city, that you also take note of the last 10 years of budget proposals that were presented to you. Every single one projected deficits and shortfalls. However, every single one returned better than projected revenues, even through the years of the pandemic. It feels conflicting when the City Hall has been asking you to approve budget amendments since January, and now finances appear to be unsustainable when it comes to our salary. I don't believe it's personal, yet it feels that way to me when there's no transparency, and it has been over 155 days since we've been out of contract. It's been almost 250 days since we began negotiations. We're not asking for much. We simply are asking for average pay from a city with a history of a healthy budget, specifically with help from Measure U. If it's truly predicted shortfall, please have staff, please explain why this prediction is more accurate from the previous 10 years. Thanks for all your hard work and your tough job of making the right decisions for the city of Santa Maria, which should also include your firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. John Mata, followed by Scott Bramson.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city man, staff. My name is John Mata. I'm a fire inspector for your city of Santa Maria Firefighter Department. I've been here for approximately two years, and I've been a fire inspector for eight years. I came over to this department to make a change. I came over to this department two years ago to help build the Prevention Bureau, to help educate the community through fire life and safety inspections, plan check, plan review, and also fire investigations. Through these past two years, it's been an honor to work for this department. It's been an honor to serve the community the way I do. I met many of you throughout many of the public events. To me, that's where I'm able to shine for our department. We get out there, we talk to people every day, and we serve in a different capacity than those on the engines. Reason why I'm here tonight is because I want to educate you about what we've done in our department and our unit. Our unit, we have, in two years, we have built a robust department. We have four inspectors now, or now we have down to three due to retention. We lost one to another department for higher pay. We also lost an administrative staff position in the last four months. So we're actually kind of hurting right now. Last year, we rented, we generated $650,000 that went back into the general fund. So we're doing our work. We are working very hard. Unfortunately, we don't have the opportunities to work overtime. We make a minimum wage, a lot lower than our neighboring agencies. Like I said, I have over eight years' experience. I can go anywhere I want in the county and the tri-counties. However, I choose here because I choose this. I choose this opportunity to speak before you. I choose this opportunity to stand up for my brothers and sisters. I looked through the, the budget, and I found, I believe, on page one for preliminary budget, and I saw a listing of wages, and one of those was fire inspector one. It stated in that fire inspector one made $91,000 or $92,000. There was a dash between. I am, I do not make that much money. I'm going to step down, fire inspector. I do not make that much money. However, if you times that by 14%, guess what you have? $91,000 a year, missing 14, 14%. Fortunately, I work hard for the city. I do everything in the city. My wife works here. My son goes to school here. I, I work here. I go to church here. I serve this community hard. Unfortunately, I do not have the means to, to live in the city. I actually live in La Plata because I can't afford to move here. I can't afford to pay the rent, the three times the rent that require me for to move my family out here. So I'm here tonight asking that you guys take a look at the budget. Please find in your hearts to help your firefighters out. We're all hurting. We're all in the same situations. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Bramson?
Good evening, City Council, city staff. My name is Scott Bramson. I'm here tonight representing the Santa Maria Firefighters Local 2020. Again, first and foremost, thank you to the council and the staff for taking the time to do this special meeting, as it's very necessary. I want to point out that when reviewing the proposed budget, historical budgets, and quarterly budget updates, I noticed there, I noticed a change in how numbers were presented. The prior director of finance would identify funding sources in dollar amounts in the quarterly budget updates. Now, within the last year, the specific dollar amounts are not presented. The funding sources are instead represented by bar graphs that are unclear and nonspecific. I would like to request that these quarterly budget updates identify specific dollar amounts for all funding sources moving forward. Second, I want to point out that over the last four years, the city's general fund budgeted revenues went from about $70 million a year from 2019, 2020, to just under $90 million a year in the current budget. That's an increase of $20 million in four years. The general fund budget contributions to the fire department remain steady at about $12 million a year. In four years, the general fund budget, budget contributions to the fire department have not changed. That's very important in a time where inflation is through the roof and city revenues continue to grow. This leads the public to believe that Measure U revenue is being used in a way that allows excess general fund revenues to be reallocated to another non-essential services. Essentially, Measure U is freeing up general fund money for other purposes. Its intentions were to supplement public safety, not free up general fund revenues. Measure U was passed by the voters to maintain and enhance essential services with the focus on the police and fire departments. While I can say there have been some service enhancements, the fire department's compensation has not been maintained. It's as if the service enhancements come at a cost to employees themselves. On July 1st, your firefighters will fall to 17 and a half percent behind the average market pay. That, by no definition, is maintaining or enhancing. As you heard two weeks ago from a community member, you are not fulfilling the will of the voters in maintaining the fire department. The inaction by City Hall is deafening. As the elected city leaders who work for the voters, you should demand that City Hall returns a balanced budget that reflects a commitment to your community's safety and the firefighters. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That closes public comment period. Next on the agenda is a presentation to be given by interim city manager, Alex Posada.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, good evening. Want to thank staff and the public for being here today. We're going to walk you through a follow-up to your last council meeting, where interim finance director Bradford presented to you the preliminary budget. What we're going to do is go through your questions down the list that you provided. There were approximately 50 total questions sent in. I'm sure that some of these will have some other follow-up questions. And what I'd like to do is, if it's an easier answer that we can answer quickly, we have the department directors here that can answer operational specific kinds of questions. So if you have them, feel free to, you know, ask. The financial questions related to graphs and charts and those things, we've uploaded those into the system. So we'll be able to give you that PowerPoint so you can see those graphs at your screens. Yeah, I think we can just jump into the questions. We did, like I said, the non-council member specific, they're just the questions as we, as we prepared answers for them.
Okay, Mr. Posada, I want to just interrupt you a minute.
Yes.
So if any of you have questions, we'll wait till the presentation's over. Any of you have questions, please write them down. Some of them may take a little bit more research so they can't be answered this evening, and, but any yes or no questions, I'm sure that they can manage to answer. Okay, Mr. Posada?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the first question was positions in capital projects for police and fire. Police amount being funded by Measure U and funded by other sources. Right now, the numbers funded by Measure U are 24 law enforcement positions at $3,060,000. And capital projects funded within Measure U for police is, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. That's why Xena's here. So the, the amounts were asked for about what position in capital project for police and fire. So police funded for fiscal year 24, 25, and the general fund is $33.22 million, and that's for 146 full-time positions. $8.41 million in operating and capital projects, for operating, sorry. Capital projects is zero. There are no capital projects requested in the 24, 26 budget. For Measure U, there's $10.9 million, the equivalent of 54 full-time employees, 1.86 million for operating, and no funding for capital projects. For fire, the fiscal year 24, 25 proposal is general fund, $10.76 million for a total of 35 full-time equivalents, 2.69 million for operating, and capital projects, there's no capital projects planned in 24, 26 budget. Measure U, there's $10.25 million for 51 full-time positions, and 2.1, 2.01 million in operating capital. And again, there's no Measure U money set aside for capital projects. Any questions on that first positions in capital projects?
Okay, you said $10.25 in Measure U. Fire, 10.25 for 51 full-time?
In fire?
Yeah.
Yes, point, 10.25 for 51 full-time equivalents.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So for question number two, it says, how long does it take to start to finish a police and fire? So police trainees are defined as those who have not yet attended the Basic California Law Enforcement Academy. They will progress through several steps in the application process, and then the process is: applications typically take four to six months; written exam and physical agility tests take an additional two weeks, or takes two weeks; interview and selection process, two weeks; background investigations, 12 weeks; the Basic California Law Enforcement Academy is 20 weeks, and then an additional field, field training period of 20 weeks. So adding all those together is how long it takes to move someone through the fire, through the police trainee program. For fire, typical firefighter recruitment will process through several steps in the application process. And there's an internal 12-week academy is conducted on a 40-hour schedule, excuse me, converting existing staff to, to the new schedule. The overall cost of the academy, including premium pay, overtime, backfilling for positions, and materials and supplies, is estimated to be $180,000. So the steps in, in that, our application period is six to eight weeks; interview and selection process, two weeks; background investigation, 12 weeks; and the Santa Maria Firefighter Academy, 12 weeks. Question number three, do we pay for academy for our police officers or our firefighters? Question and cost. Police, yes. The city of Santa Maria covers the cost of police trainee to attend the 20-week law enforcement academy with an estimated cost of $5,500 per trainee. This includes tuition, materials, supplies, uniforms, and their hourly rate or their pay. The firefighter recruitment is usually for those who already process a firefighter one certificate issued by the state of California or an equivalent. There is no external academy required. However, Santa Maria Fire hosts an internal 12-week academy, which we mentioned before, for newly hired firefighters. Question number four, how many firefighters do we have? The current employee count per classification is fire inspector one, there are three. Firefighters, there is 27. The R specialist two, there is one. Fire captain, there are 19. Fire engineer, there are 20. Question number five is how many firefighters, how, I'm sorry, how? Question five was how much firefighters made last year, broken down by the number earning over $100,000, over $150,000, over $200,000. Response, based on payroll data for fiscal year 22, 23, 63 personnel in the fire department salary group made a total of $9,365,936. Of this, 17 made, earned over $100,000, 20 earned over $150,000, and 14 earned over $200,000. How much are the nine new firefighters costing, costing with benefits, total cost? The fully loaded cost to the city with benefits of the nine new firefighters is $1.154,500. Other, question seven, other agencies benefit, other agency benefits for police and fire compared to ours? Please see the spreadsheet. It's the MRG Santa Maria City Fire Initiative Benefits Pay Study that was done back in 2023. That will give you the information that you're looking for, that link that's, that's there. We can provide that. But there was a MRG study done back in 2023.
Mr. Posada?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that we did post this draft document on the city's agenda meeting portal, and that link is live on that document.
Question eight is budget gap in Measure U. Please explain what salaries are funded from the general fund. That's part one. Can you show what the average salary is and add in benefits with the total package, with the total package, and what each police officer/ firefighter in all positions make? So this one's a little longer. The budget gap in Measure U is shown in the preliminary budget due to the fact that the same number of personnel and services provided in Measure U in fiscal '23, '24 is now costing more, basically increases. Coupled with a slower sales tax growth, Measure U will not be able to sustain the same level of service. The city could reduce the level of service or transfer some of the expenditures to the general fund, which would increase the budget gap in the general funds, in the general fund. The average salary of position supported by Measure U, this is the average salary in all Measure U positions, is $90,800. The average salary and benefits of a position, of a position supported by Measure U, I reached out and benefits, is $153,300. So the first one is your just salary, then $90,800, and then with benefits, $153,300. Average salary and benefits of a police officer supported by Measure U is $167,900. The average salary and benefits of a firefighter supported by Measure U is $146,200. And again, those are averages. Question nine, what are their work schedules? The police department works a 4:10 schedule, utilizing a total of four shifts to adequately, adequately cover the 24/7 nature of their job. Traffic bureau, detective bureau, and community services unit work 4:10s Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Half of the unit is off on Mondays, and the other half of the unit is off on Fridays. Firefighters work a schedule that includes two days working and two days off, followed by two days working and four days off, followed by two days working and two days off, followed by two day, followed by two days working and eight days off. So that's the pattern that is used in the fire service. The pattern is then repeated. Every day, 24-hour shifts responding to emergency calls from the fire station. That's the, the personnel contingent we have out. Firefighters work 56 hours a week, 112 hours biweekly, and 2,912 hours annually. This compares to 2,080 work hours in a year for a typical 40-hour-a-week city employee. How much, how much overtime is accumulated? The following chart shows overtime budgets versus the actual. So if you can take a look at the chart, it kind of explains where overtime is at and where, where it has been in 2022, and where it looks like it's going to end up in 2023, 24. and where it has been in 2022, and where it looks like it's going to end up in 2023, 24. Any comments on that chart, Xena? You have?
Uh, no comments, it's just, uh, first is appropriation, so that's your budget. The expenditures for 22, 23 is the actual expenditures that occurred in that year. So there were savings in budget to actuals overall for the two departments of 185,000. And then this year, we, the data is only through, um, where we are today, so there's three more pay periods. So there is, um, at this point, 629,000 not spent yet, but we have three more pay periods to post.
Any questions? Yes?
How do we identify what personnel fall under measure U and which ones fall under the general fund?
So the way that the city has budgeted, uh, general fund versus measure U, uh, in 2023, 2024, is that a specific number of positions was allocated to measure U, as was identified at the time that the measure you could support within the current fiscal year revenue. So following that formula of the council direction to allocate 90% to public safety, that's how the positions were set, and then we are booking the payroll to fully meet that expenditure burden.
So it's essentially just, we need 14 positions, or however many positions under measure U to fulfill that 90% public safety?
Correct.
Okay.
Were you able to get all that, clerk? Thanks. Uh, thank you, moving on, on there's, uh, beyond the overtime chart, it says, police. Most of the overtime is triggered when either patrol or our communication center falls below the minimum number of staffing required. Situations that may cause us to fall below minimum staffing levels, typically consists of personnel calling in sick, vacation, comp time, FMLA leave, workers' compensation leave. The department averages between seven to 10 employees out on a given day for various time periods and reasons. Mandated training is also another reason that creates the need to backfill. Priority investigations outside the scope of patrol, homicide, uh, in-home child molestation cases, fatal collisions, uh, are, all require immediate attention, and these incidents are often reported in the evenings or weekends. And in those cases, detectives and/or traffic officers are called out on an overtime basis to conduct the investigation. The following vacancies, uh, exasperate the need for overtime. Currently, there are two dispatcher vacancies. There are 14 sworn vacancies. On June 10th, we'll have five officers entering their 20-week field training program with an anticipated completion date of early November, 2024. We are not including these five officers as vacancies, although they will not be solo officers for several months. There are two record technician vaca, um, vacancies, and two, uh, police service technicians vacancies. For the fire department, uh, staffing is, uh, different, uh, just because of the nature of the, of the beast. Uh, the fire department has a minimum daily staffing level of 20. That means that 25, 20 firefighters, fire personnel are on duty daily to provide emergency services for the city. The recent master plan identified Santa Maria's operational staffing levels falling outside the national and regional ranges. Currently, Santa Maria has .64 firefighters per 1,000 population, with the West Coast average being, uh, .92 per 1,000. This number is according to the, uh, survey of fire departments. Overtime is accumulated when there is a vacancy in staff, in staffing. When vacancies are identified, replacements are assigned to maintain the minimum daily staffing level. That's that 20 number I mentioned earlier. These replacements are paid at 1.5, uh, percent of their out, sorry, one and a half times their hourly rate, uh, their salary rate. Historically, overtime has occurred in, um, recent past due to either vacancies in the department. In 2023, experienced 20,384 hours of overtime, uh, due solely on vacancies. This resulted in, in the field working of additional 849 hours shifts due to the vacancies. Another cost for overtime is participation in the Master Mutual Aid Agreement, where, uh, the city commits to help when available neighboring agencies cope with disasters. The overtime that is accumulated during these deployments is reimbursed, uh, to the city, however, uh, is reimbursed, however, and is paid overtime rate, including additional apparatus and administrative fees. Simply stated, overtime is directly correlated to vacant positions and the need for, uh, the firefighter positions to be filled. Question 11. Can we limit or prevent overtime? This one is a little bit more complex, so is there any follow-up on number 10 before I go on to that one? Okay. So due to constraints, due to constant staff response time in emergency situations, overtime could not be, cannot be fully over, um, avoided. Public safety departments manage overtime through scheduling and maintaining full staffing. This would be something that the department would decide based on multiple, on multiple factors. Operational needs, requirements both internally and externally with community services, needs and the budget. In the police department that runs 24/7, uh, overtime will always be required to meet service demands to keep the community safe. The situation outlined in question 10 above are typical of the catalyst for the bulk of overtime. Fire, when looking at limiting or preventing overtime, the question must be asked first of what, what is the problem trying to be solved? As stated in the previous question, overtime is needed to maintain a minimum daily staffing levels when vacancies occurred. It is almost impossible to eliminate overtime in the fire service due to the unique staffing model used. Overtime can be limited or minimized, um, by addressing first, uh, any vacant positions. Hiring a pool of extra firefighters, uh, in different ranks to fill these positions would, uh, when vacant, would also minimize overtime accumulation. However, you're talking about, uh, having to hire, uh, these firefighters with their, with the associated cost of having a pool of, I'll call them reserve firefighters or standby firefighters. This would reduce overtime, but the costs, but cost the city additional funds in the budget, since you're basically carrying another group of firefighters, uh, on the books. Any other option to limit or prevent overtime would result in decreased service levels to the community. City voters in, uh, November 2018 voted to extend and enhance, um, measure U to the one sent to support city services. This, um, the local transactions and use of these taxes within the city of Santa Maria was voted on in the 74.18% approval rate. So, the real issue comes down to not having any vacancies. The less vacancies you have, in particular the fire service, then the more, um, the less opportu, the less time there'll be for overtime, because you'll have enough coverage. Question 12 is what is the retirement salary we pay for police and fire after retirement? This gets a little more complex, because it is through their MOU, through their memorandum of understanding, and their, their labor agreement. So, uh, I expect that you'll have some questions, so feel free to ask them as we go through the, the presentation. The current police, uh, MOU 22, 24, for sworn unit members in the employ of the city prior to July 1st, 2011. The city provides California Public Retirement System, or CALPERS, 3% at 55 retirement benefit based on the single, single highest year retirement, uh, one-year final compensation. So basically, the highest year that that individual employee has upon retirement, that would be his compensation in retirement. The city provides the CALPERS 3% at 55 retirement benefit to those classic sworn unit members hired on or after July 1st, 2011, based on the last 36 months of employment average compensation. So that's the, the nuance of the difference. In the first, uh, group, it is the highest year. In this group, it is the highest average of three years. The city provides CALPERS 2.7% at 55 retirement benefits for all non-sworn unit members in the employment of the city, uh, prior to July 1st, 2011. The city provides CALPERS 2% at 55 retirement benefits for those classic non-sworn unit members hired on or after July 1st, 2011, based on the last 36 months of their employment. As defined under the, under the, um, Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, public safety non-classic employees, also known as new employees, hired after January 1, 2013, are covered under the CALPERS 2.7 at 55 retirement benefit, based on the last 36 months of employment average. As defined under the PEPRA, under PEPRA, miscellaneous non-classic employees, also new employees, hired after January 1, 2013, are covered under CALPERS 2% at 62 retirement benefit based on the last 36 months of employment average. For fire, under the current, uh, local 2020 MOU, for those unit members, sorry, um, in the employ of the city prior to July 1, 2011, the city provides 3% at 50 CALPERS retirement benefit based on the single highest year, one-year final compensation retirement formula. The city provides the 3% at 55 CALPERS retirement benefit for those classic unit members hired on or after July 1, 2011, based on the third, on the 36-month retirement formula, or 36-months' average retirement formula. As defined by PEPRA, public safety, non-classic employees, hired after January 1, 2013, are covered under CALPERS 2.7 at 57 retirement benefit, also based on the 36 consecutive months of employment average. So it's difficult to, like, throw you a number and say this is where each employee is, but it is a, it is a, a significant cost, and we'll talk a little bit more about the unfunded liabilities component as we get into the questions here. Any questions on that one? Thank you, question 13. How many retired police and firefighters do we have? As of the most recent CALPERS valuation dated June 30th, 2022, the city had the following number of retired employees in the public safety retirement plans. In fire, PEPRA members, we have one. In fire tier one, we have 57. In fire tier two, there are none. For police, in the PEPRA program, there are four. For police tier one, there are 155. And for police tier two, there is one. So again, you kind of have to go back and look at the chart before and say, you know, which ones are getting the, the one-year highest, getting their retirement based on their one-year highest earnings? Which of them are getting their retirement based on their 36-month average? And, and then the percentage, whether it's at 3%, 2.7, or 2. Are we actually paying for two departments? The one active one and the ones retired? So, not really, I mean, I, I think, I think I know where that question was going, was kind of, you know, is there like a ghost department in the background with retirements? And, y- yes, I mean, there's a liability that we have in paying off these retirements through CALPERS and our contributions to CALPERS. But there isn't, uh, that's probably the easiest way, is there is an obligation to pay these retirement benefits that the city must maintain and here, uh, into the future. So the response is, no, while the city pays into retirement system, the city only pays for one operating department for both police and fire, which is it. The city is enrolled in CALPERS pension system. The CALPERS, uh, system requires members to pay into the retirement system throughout the employees' active employment years. The CALPERS pension system is, is a defined benefit where the benefits are guaranteed to the employee based on applicable plans. Any loss in the plan's assets due to market conditions, are absorbed, uh, by the member agency, in this case, the city. The city's pension system, uh, continues to be underfunded as the last valuation date of June 30, 2022. The total outstanding unfunded pension liability is one, is 189 million dollars. The city is required to pay down the unfunded, uh, pension liability. PERS requires a minimum payment to be made towards the unfunded liability each year. The required payments will continue to rise through approximately physical year 20, um, 31, 32, based on the current, uh, actuarial valuations. So, um, this is where those employees that have retired and they, they are earning their retirement benefits, this is the city's share to pay towards that retirement as we continue to move forward through that, that employee's retirement. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, when it's mentioned that, uh, any losses in the plan's assets due to the market conditions are absorbed by the member agency, the city, that means that, uh, you know, the bucket that it's, uh, invest, basically invested, so, or, uh, retired employees, if there's a loss in the market, if the market crashes, or there's some loss, the city will be, uh, they will, will take care of that, will not be affected, the retiree, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that would be absolutely correct. That's a defined pension plan, which is different from, you know, a lot of your private employers. If you have 401K, market crashes, the employee loses that portion of the pension, whereas in the CALPERS system, a defined benefit plan, the losses are absorbed by the member agency and the employee or future retirees, um, held whole.
Thank you.
Yes? There was another question?
Yes, would, would these payments be under, I'm looking at the expenditure overview of the budget, the summary budget, would that be under salaries and benefits?
Yes, all of the pension obligations are rolled into the benefits.
Thank you.
Question 15, explain pension and unfunded liabilities. I'm gonna let, um, Xena handle this one.
Okay, so explain pensions and unfunded liabilities. Uh, you have a fairly lengthy answer here, but in essence, as we just talked about, the pensions, uh, and being the defined benefit plan, the CALPERS actuaries calculate based on, uh, the number of employees, the future payrolls, what the funding level should be to meet the plan's obligations to those employees. And then they also look at the current state of the assets in the plan. And so they compare of how much asset we have in the plan versus, um, how much we, as of the date of evaluation, owe in the future or current pensions to all of the employees in the plan. And so when we talked about, talk about unfunded liabilities, it's really that difference between the assets that we have in the plans and the assets that, um, actual evaluations tell us that we must have to be fully funded. Unfortunately, the 2022 valuation, which is always dated two years back, when we look at the current year funding, was not a good year for CALPERS. They received a negative 6.1%. So those particular valuations have really decreased all of the city's, um, funding levels, and the liability has increased to 189 million dollars.
So basically, when CALPERS loses money, the cities have to make up the gap? In our, in our particular plans, is that about right?
Correct.
The question 16 is, explain the enterprise funds and list the funds and explain how they are used. So we gave you some detailed answers here, but basically, an enterprise fund is, probably the best example is the utilities department. The utilities department collects customer fees for water, sewer, and garbage. Those fees are used solely for the provision of water, sewer, and garbage services. They set their rates based on their costs. They project out into the future what kind of costs they're going to be faced with, and then bill those in to their rates, which are then passed on to the rate payer. And the rate payers then pay that in their monthly bills that they receive. And those monies are specifically restricted to the use for those particular purposes. The enterprise fund, as I mentioned, that's what the enterprise fund is. And then there are particular funds that are set up, and we provided them here. There's the water fund. Again, it provides water. They're all very indicative. Waste water fund, which then gets rid of the water and waste. And then the solid waste collection, which is the operation of actually going out, picking up the trash, dealing with all the regulations regarding the disposal of the trash, running the regional landfill, and all the costs associated with providing that service. The solid waste fund, I guess, is.
Excuse me, Mr. Posada. Ms. Escobedo has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So if we are understanding what you're explaining, these enterprise funds is money that has to be simply, it's basically get from one department, in this case, for trash, picking trash, and that money should be used to the same, in the same department. Is that correct?
In the, within the funds.
Okay.
Shad, do you want to take a second and tackle that one? We'll have the director of utilities come up quickly and kind of give you a recap.
Thank you. Mr. Posada.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Escobedo. Yeah, so for example, in the utilities fund, we have four separate enterprise funds. So if you think of the functions done in utilities, so the landfill disposal fund, that you'll see in the department, is specific to those funds collected essentially at the gate. So when you come to the landfill, you go across the scale, you pay your fee, those go into the disposal fund. When you're on the site there and you see the big yellow equipment, you see the people disposing the trash, the revenue generated at the scale house for that pays those expenses. It would be inappropriate and a violation of the enterprise fund's requirements for those funds to then, let's say, pay for recreation and park activities downtown, because there's no nexus or connection from the fee collected at the landfill scale house to these other services that might be provided. So likewise, funds collected for water fees are specific to expenses related to, let's say, state water, or water treatment, or replacing fixed fire hydrants. So in that way, each of the enterprise funds, as Mr. Posada described, are specific to that fund. Even within the utilities department, we do not mix water costs with wastewater costs or solid waste collection costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a follow-up as to that. So would you say that the fees that we're collecting cover the cost that the city is expending?
That is correct, in very broad terms. So last fall, I brought an item before the city council requesting consideration of water and sewer rates, based on the projections we had at that time. And to make it a connection to the items we've discussed this evening, we had the actuarial cost, let's say, for the unfunded PERS liabilities. So we added those into the salary cost. We made projections on what kind of staffing needs we would have, the cost for state water through the Central Coast Water Authority. So all of those are aggregated along with potential future capital costs. So replacement, we've, I've come to this council a couple of times regarding the wastewater treatment plant, for example, on the wastewater fund. So as best we can, we put those into a giant rate model and predict those costs so that we can come to city council and request rates be set appropriately to address those expenditures.
So as of right now, do we have 100% cost recovery in your department?
So, yes, in very broad terms. We are currently going to study the collections rates. So we have two things, and I'm sorry, because I know we have an item on tomorrow night's agenda regarding user fees. When we set user fees, when we came before council in the past, the ones specific to the enterprise funds were set up at 100% cost recovery. So in that way, rates for water and sewer bill, we're not subsidizing someone in requesting another service. So the user fees and the rates are both intended to have 100% cost recovery.
So you said in very broad terms, but that sounds pretty specific.
I'm an engineer.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what I hear is, and what it's written down here, is the fees can only be asserted to a specific service. So when we talk about, when we raised fees last, was last year, that was not because the city will keep that money. It's not a business for the city to create revenue. It's to, we're working towards that, it's a plan, treatment plan. It's that, that was part of the reason that was brought up, getting ready for that.
Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Escobedo.
And sorry, and that, that plan, that requirement was brought up from the, for a new legislation brought up by the state of California.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Escobedo. So importantly, when we talk about setting fees and rates in the enterprise funds, specific to the property-related fees, so for Santa Maria, we're talking water, sewer, and garbage, they're bound by the requirements of Proposition 218, and it was an amendment to the California Constitution, and an agency may not charge more for the service than the cost to provide it. So very importantly, that's why we project all these costs and come up with the amount of money that would be needed. To your point, the Regional Water Quality Control Board notified the city that we had to enroll the wastewater treatment plant in, under a new permit. Our current plant cannot meet those discharge requirements, so we are projecting those costs in and setting those into the rates. So that is how that works, and once again, that is based on the projected costs or what we are allowed to charge the individual property owners.
We cannot charge more than what is legally allowed to.
That is correct. The city is not legally allowed to, for, in very broad business terms, not allowed to make a profit on its utility enterprises.
Okay, thank you.
So to go on, there are the other enterprise funds or funds that are restricted, and we made a list of them here. Public transit fund is another, which is federal dollars specifically dedicated to And those are broken down. The Breeze Fund, which is also a transit program. Radio Technology Fund, which supplies the funding for our radio and technology program. As you know, we have one of the few 700-megahertz radio systems in the area. That was one of the major accomplishments a few years back.
That's right.
So we set aside funds to keep that system operational. The landfill closure and post-closure fund, Shad didn't mention that particularly, but it is money that is going to be required to, at one point, when the West, when the East Main Street facility is filled, it will need to be closed, and there's a cost associated with closure. And there's also the landfill closure and corrective action plan fund.
I do have a question in specific to Measure U. Were any of the funds for Measure U used towards any of these funds?
I don't think so.
No. Measure U Fund is a subset of a general fund. It's a tax, so it's used for general programs only, and then in accordance with the council's set policy. Thank you.
Question 17 is, how are grants written for all departments? We do not have a centralized grant writing staff, so what happens is that each of the departments look at their particular funding sources, either within this, well, mostly within the state and federal government, to make these requests. I can speak from my experience at recreation and parks, that a number of the funding sources have come from the state propositions that have been passed for local parks measures and statewide parks measures, and that has been funding most of our projects over the last several years. Public Works depends greatly on some of their applications for funding. The Battles Road Project, or Beautification Project, is a, is a, is that an active transportation there, Mr. Felgony?
Yeah.
So there's a number of programs out there that each department has been applying for, trying to find funding. Some departments, there is no, you know, state-level or federal-level funding for them, so it's a little bit more difficult for all the departments to secure funding through grants. We do have a grant committee. That's kind of an ad hoc committee of city staff, so when something comes up and we need help gathering the information, we'll pull together the necessary staff to complete an application so that we can be successful. We have been successful in earmarks from our federal legislators. We've been able to secure funding for several projects from Washington. And then we've also been able to secure some funding specifically from our state legislators on particular projects that are moving forward. So there has been that benefit as far as grants go. One of the issues on grants, and I'll mention it since I didn't see it in the write-up here, is, you know what, they say there's no such thing as a free lunch. Well, it's the same thing with grants. The grants are not free. They require a lot of time and tracking. Finance recently dedicated one employee to work on the grant tracking component of it. You might remember a year and a half ago or so, we had a big storm, and we had a FEMA come in and say, you know, we're here to help you. We're still waiting for that help, and we're still trying to work our way through the help system, trying to secure the funds to make the repairs to our facilities that were damaged during that storm. So it's, tracking is just as important as everything else, because, you know, anytime you get a grant, somebody's probably going to want to audit you later on down the road to see how the money was spent. Question 18. What are the big items, what are the big items and issues that we need to plan for? And what are their costs, such as a water treatment plant? So the list here is, is, is the things that we think are the most pressing for us. If you look down the list, parking structure evaluation and retrofit of the old structure across the street, enhanced roadway maintenance, the Depot Street and Railroad Avenue Bicycle Way Project, College Drive Bicycle Way Project, East Main Street Rehabilitation, EV infrastructure expansion, EV electric vehicles and charging stations, facilities, housing facilities for our transit program, a remote transit facility, which is a facility located out a little further, so we don't have everything, you know, having to come into town for servicing. BRT implementation. Anybody want to help me with those initials? Mr. Felgony, thank you.
The BRT implementation is the Best Rapid Transit System Network that we're studying at the moment to implement, potentially down Broadway, to help aid with development of the city.
Thanks. You can hang around for a second if you want. There may be more. Yeah, Mr. Felgony, would you mind touching on pockets parks and the ADA issues at Seamus Field?
Yeah, specifically with Seamus Field, there's some ADA issues that are associated with it being sunken, and so you have a situation where we need to figure out how to get people onto the field that potentially could need accommodation, and you have a field that's significantly below grade, and so we have to engineer a solution that allows people to use that field in a way that anybody else would. So that's a significant cost associated with that. We do have some active issues associated with that. And then, what was the other one, Alex?
The pocket parks.
Pocket parks, an initiative that we've been working on with, in conjunction with recreation and parks, to provide pocket parks in different areas of the city that aren't currently parked. So parts of the Northwest, we've identified various parcels that are candidates for those pocket parks, and so we've been working with Regan Parks to design those and implement, some of which are out to bid actually at the moment, and there's others that'll be continuing to go out to bid.
Thank you. And I believe those are it. Thank you, Brett. Pocket parks were one of the ARPA-funded projects that we had when the ARPA plans were developed. Waste water discharge requirements, we kind of touched on that. Councilmember Escobedo mentioned that, that we're under requirements to improve the quality of our discharge. That'll be one of the things that Utilities Department and Public Works will be working on. The construction of the Integrated Los Flores Landfill Project has to continue. The current East Main landfill is going to be reaching its useful life, so there has to be an alternative, so right. The plan has always been that that would happen out at Los Flores Ranch, and Utilities continues working on that project. The relocation and construction of Fire Station 2 is being planned for. As some of you may recall, there was negotiations with the Camfield Group for the Blosser Ranch site, and the dedication of some land there for a new fire station. So that's a moving forward project. Fire Department train facility is brought forward, something that we may be looking at in the future as a, as a major project. The general fun, general plan update is also one of the bigger things moving forward. If, Mr. Woo, do you have a second to maybe give us an update on where general plan update And the cost, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, about four years ago, the council did allocate $1.7 million towards the general plan effort. We're about two-thirds of the way through. In December, the council provided direction on a preferred alternative. That's when the council took a look at different growth scenarios and provided direction for some moderate expansion and info development. So we're at the last couple of stages in terms of preparing an EIR for the general plan, preparing an annexation plan, and also coming up with a policy document, which will come before you likely towards the end of 2025. So there's still another 12 to 18 months to go on this, but the effort at least has been, the general plan document and map has been, the funding has already been allocated, and we're working through that funding.
Thank you. So these are kind of the key projects that are out there. There are others, of course, smaller projects, but still important to the residents, but these, we feel, were identified as the key projects. Question number 19. Let's see. The question is, would like to hear from council members on the paying for ongoing cost, wages, and benefits with one-time funding. Perhaps a definition of one-time money would be appreciated. So what we tried to do is to refer you to the city's financial and budget policies, and that is provided here. And that is provided here. It states, unless otherwise authorized by the city council, the city strives to adopt a balanced budget, whereas operating revenues are equal to or exceed operating expenditures during the year of the two-year budget period. Any increase in expenses, a decrease, decrease in revenue, or a combination of the two that results in budget imbalances requires a budget revision, rather than spending unappropriated surplus or designated reserves to support ongoing operations. Any year-end operating surplus will revert to either an unappropriated fund balances to be used for maintaining reserve levels set by policy or to the capital projects fund for one-time only general fund expenditures. So that is the council's policy. That one-time revenue, however it's received, would, would be distributed according to this, this policy. So it's again, if the, we come into some savings somewhere, it would be if it's considered a one-time only revenue. I can probably use the, 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 the non-hazardous soil that we used to accept out the landfill as cover. That was one-time revenue. It was meant for that purpose and those funds were used in, in, in the general fund for these, and allocated to these one-time reserve levels. Under this policy, it allows for total expenditures to exceed revenues in a given year. However, in this situation, beginning fund balances should only be used to fund capital improvement projects or other one-time, non-reoccurring expenditures. Ms. Bradford, anything you would like to add to that?
Um, no, thank you. I think that covers it. We go into more explanation about the Government Fiscal Officers Association, the fact that that's the national organization for the entire United States that provides the best practices and the council's policy, as is set in your policies, is conforming with those best practices. So once again, one-time expenditure, or non-one-time expenditures or, and revenues are those that spread across multiple years. So they're truly ongoing and reoccurring versus one-time revenue could be generated by a sale of property, some economic event that gives us some additional revenue or state federal grant, and those would be appropriated for one-time expenditures.
Thank you. Any questions on number 19?
Yeah.
Number 20, in simple terms, provide a chart of what we pay in as part of employee benefit package. I, I assume that's what I, below the chart is showing salary and benefit payments to each of the bargaining groups and non-represented groups in total annual dollars based on fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Ms. Bradford, do you wanna touch this chart?
So it's a, quite a busy chart. There is a lot of information here. But if you, if anybody's interested in taking the time, essentially what you see horizontally is each of the bargaining group or non-represented employees group. And then on the left bar, you see all of the different ways that the employees are compensated. So it's not just base salary, just the very bottom of the chart. But there's other pays that our employees receive per their agreements or the resolutions that are approved by the city council. So some examples are education pay, bilingual pay, longevity pay, payments for Class A/B licenses, uniform allowance, auto allowance. And of course, some of the big ones are health insurance, payments that the city provides. The city does pay for 100% of the lowest health insurance plan for our employees. And then the PERS and also post-employment health benefits or other significant expenditures that the city pays towards the overall compensation package.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you explain the different groups that are, so FIRE, it's a, we know, but NMAC and POA, PSN, please?
So FIRE is the FIRE group, NMAC is the non-represented management and other confidential classifications. The POA is the police officers, and then the PSN would be public safety management. SEIU is all of your other represented employees that are non-public safety. And San Maria, PAMM.
Middle managers.
Okay, thank you. For police.
Yeah, police, sorry. Yes. Any questions more on those? So the chart's pretty good. I think it kinda lists out what, what's out there, what the additional benefits are, what the costs that we project out for next year to be. Yeah, we're happy to answer any other questions on those. Question number 21 says, the general fund budget schedule shows a $15.8 million deficit. How much of that amount was previously appropriated for future projects? So the $15.8 million budget deficit is due to the general fund's expenditures for operating program, programs exceeding the general fund revenue. None of this dollar amount, none of these dollar amounts were previously appropriated for future projects or is recommended to be appropriated for future projects. Wanna touch base on that a little bit more?
This just illustrates, once again, the point that the $15.8 million budget deficit in general fund is based on ongoing revenues, not meeting the ongoing levels of expenditures. As you have seen in the presentation during the last council meeting where we talked about the overall trends, the biggest contributor to that is our salaries and benefits in the
Question number 22, why are there different, why are there two different total amounts? $354.8 million in 24, 25, and $346.4 million in 25, 26 on the same document? And the amounts are $353.6 for a million for 24, 25, and $343.2 million for 25, 26? Do you wanna cover that one? Yeah, the, the correct total aggregated budget and the amount should be $354.8 million and physical, for, and fiscal year 25, 26 should be $46.4 million. The budget document is prepared manually and we did have some errors that happened and we were trying to catch them up. Question 23 of the 4, 44.60, .6, full-time equivalents increased position in 24, 25. Are ARPA positions, are the ARPA positions that weren't approved in this budget? So there's no ARPA positions approved for, requested in the, in the new fiscal year Because ARPA and, the ARPA, limited term employment ends on June 30th of this year. At that point in time, there will be no ARPA positions beyond that date.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
So a little bit of clarification on this, on this question, the reply. So as I, as, as I see, it's a little bit tricky, I know, it's a little bit hard to understand completely. A little more clarification. So in this budget that it's gonna be presented to us, or has been presented to us, there's no ARPA positions that were, basically we're not absorbing positions that were funded through ARPA before? Is that accurate?
Correct. What we're proposing, any of the budget positions that are being asked for in the new budget will be new allocations.
Okay. Thank you.
Number 24, how did staff come up with a 25% from general fund for reserves?
Thank you. So the 25% general fund reserves is best, is based once again on best practices. So once again, going to Government Fiscal Officer Association practices, the best recommendation is to set aside reserves that can hold a municipality at a minimum through a quarter of its operations, which is where this level is really set at, based on unpredicted events that could occur, emergencies, significant economic fluctuations. So this is a best practice that essentially all organizations throughout the state and the nation follow, and set appropriate reserves. And our reserves are not exceeding that minimum amount that's recommended.
Question number 25 is, how much money are we saving from adding economic development position? So the economic development position that we brought up to council, I believe it was in quarter three report, in the Q3 report. We're working with the chamber right now on conducting, so I guess the main thing is that we're not moving forward with that position as an allocated request in the budget. But we are gonna work with the chamber on conducting an evaluation of the current economic development program that we have with them, bringing in and outside consulting firm to evaluate the program and make recommendations. If the recommendation is that there should be some change or that it should remain the same, then we'll bring that back to the council. I would expect it won't be until probably the fall. In the meantime, we will be working with the chamber to come up with a month-to-month agreement that would take effect July 1 of this year until we get some resolution.
So that will be reflected in the budget, updated budget?
Yes. Yes, that will be reflected in the budget. Question 26 is a little protracted, too. It says, capital projects with costs. So the proposed CMEP schedule for 24, 28, there's a link there for that. It is an extensive document. There are a lot of items in the capital projects list. If you would like to go through them before the 18th meeting, we'd be happy to do that with you. But it is pretty extensive. If anybody wants to look at it, these, these links are active or are they not?
I thought they were, but they are not.
Okay, we'll get the links active so then people can click it on their own, on the, on the city's website and they'll be able to check what those, what those look like.
Mr. Passata, are they, part of them, are the response 18?
Oh, I'm sorry. Some of them, some of them are, yes.
So like the wastewater requirements, plant upgrade, and the construction and relocation of Fire Station Two, and the remote transit facility, all, all those are part of that?
Yes, some of them are. So what we did is we tried to project capital projects out five years. So some of them are there and they're not recommended for funding in this particular two-year budget cycle, but they've been moved off into the future. But all that is shown on the charts and you'll be able to see what the, what the recommendations are.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And once those projects are, you know, starting to move forward, they will come back to us and, well, so one of my, one of the things that I think that's important is for us to see what the, what projects are the ones that we need to prioritize. So that would come in the yearly, in the, in the yearly meeting, right? When we review the budget, if that happens.
Yeah, so, yeah, you will have an opportunity to review the capital projects list at, on the 18th or before, if you wanna take a look at it now, which is probably a better idea to take a look at it.
Yeah, but my, my question would be more regards, now that we're moving those to two years, that eventually, eventually those projects are not gonna be, not all of, not that huge list will be taken care of in this two-year budget. It will be moving, moving along and we'll be prioritizing those that are the most.
Right, the, the, the biggest priority will be, so obviously the departments that are running those projects will bring them, will set them up on their priorities as to where they want to, where they think they can manage the project, you know, to occur. But the biggest issue will be the funding level, where the funding is coming from. And we'll bring those with each of the projects as we move forward. Every project will probably end up coming to you when we approve bids or we, you know, when we go out, when we open bids or propose to go out to bids. All those come back to you for, for approval.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Question 27 is, past and projected costing for PERS liability? And that's the next chart that's, that's provided. You can take a look at it if you have questions, we'll try and answer them for you.
So to hit a few highlights, when you see the miscellaneous, that's all the non-public safety employees. About, in about 2017, CalPERS changed their methodology as they have been really trying to bring their funding status to closer to fully funded for all of their organizations and their plans. So they now require a set dollar amount that each member agency has to pay a year into each plan. So when you look at, for example, miscellaneous tier one, which actually is the same, it's kind of blended for them for all three tiers, you see the normal cost, which is the cost that the employer is required to pay based on the current payroll. And then you see the unfunded liability, which is at $8.6 million for that group in 24, 25. And then it grows based on the current actual analysis to $11.2 million by year 29, 30. So you can see that we are still in that ramp-up time period before these actual regulations would hopefully show some decreases in the payments that the city is required to pay. As I've mentioned, the 2022 year was not a good year for CalPERS. They had a minus .61 return on investment. So unfortunately, even some of the tiers that were fully funded in the year before, such as tier two and tier three for our public safety employees, now have some unfunded liability. And that's the smaller amounts that you see towards the bottom of this graph. But we're paying unfunded liabilities now for all of our plans. This chart here is just, it was actually prepared prior to the last financial plan development, but this is just a graphic representation of approximate amounts of dollars paid towards pensions for the city. So this is part of the issue that we are seeing with expenditures growing at a greater rate than our revenues, which are primarily sales tax, property tax, which only grows at about 2% to 3% a year.
Question 28 says, employee benefit listing chart by labor group. And that is provided, again, on a link. It's the citywide MOU benefits. And you'll be able to take a look at those. And again, if you have any questions, once you're able to see those charts, then, you know, let us know. Pretty much the, the benefit packages, you know, are based on the, on the agreements with the particular labor groups. So each of them are a little bit different. Question 29, the number of citations fines related to fireworks in the last two, in the last two or three days. What are some of the measures that have been put in place to address illegal fireworks? The Fire Department hasn't, reports that they haven't written any citations, you know, in these last few days. And I'm assuming that we're talking about the pre-Fourth of July days. There's no program in place to monitor illegal fireworks. I, this is from the chief. I believe that that would be police or code enforcement matters. We have plans for an aerial craft, same as last year, monitoring the city on the Fourth of July to identify illegal fireworks use. Citations will be sent to the addresses identified with the aircraft that uses a GPS to do that. The chief has, with the assistance of our PEG staff, has created a couple of public service messages in English and in Spanish to service messages in English and in Spanish to be televised out there, making people aware that the program will be back in full force in, on the 4th of July. I didn't know if Chief Schneider wanted to make any comments on that particular item on fireworks from the police department's angle. Any particular questions for PD? All right, thank you. Please, question 30 is please provide the amount spent by each department in the last two years in the last budget. And the responses refer to the attached 2126 expenditure by department fund PDF, and is that? Do we have that one? Did they get that? Yeah, here on. We did send a document out, looks kind of like this. Did you see, has anyone seen that? Has the general fund allocations out by department, by expenditure, and by fund. If you don't have that, if that didn't come to you, it would have been probably an email to you. We can provide that to you today.
Could it have been council notes? Could it have been in the council notes?
No, I think it would have been separate. I'll ask Mrs. Lane if she can go ahead and come in, and we'll make copies of these for you, so I can have them. Let's see. Question 31 is please provide the amount allocated for each department in the proposed budget. Please provide a spreadsheet that shows each department's spending in the last two years and each department's proposed budget. And there will also be a chart laying that all out for you for 21 through 26 expenditures by department and by fund. This is the same, this will be the same document. Question 32, or what are the increases or decreases of the budget for each department? Again, that'll be in that document. It's very information, a lot of information will be in that document, so be sure to review it carefully, and if you have questions, you know, feel free to get ahold of Ms. Bradford or I with those questions. Question 33, what are the primary sources of revenue for the city in 2426 proposed budget? And there's a chart for you to take a look at. Ms. Bradford?
So this is the same chart that we presented during the preliminary presentation at the last council meeting. This is all of the revenues for the entire city, for all of the operations and capital improvement program. So you can see the largest revenue source, which once again is only allowable to be used by those enterprise or business activity funds, water waste, water, solid waste. There's also transit, and some of those smaller funds we mentioned is the enterprise funds revenue, which is from your chargers, charges to consumers for that specific purposes. Once again, we cannot make a profit on it, and that constitutes overall 46.5% of citywide revenues. Our second largest source is, of course, taxes. That is what spends all of the general governmental operations, so that's all of your public safety, parks, a lot of the maintenance and public works. Then we have some licenses permits and fines that are governmental activities where we are allowed to charge for specific operations that are not for overall government benefit or overall residents benefit, but for specific uses, such as, for example, obtaining a business license. Then we have revenues and use of money from property. Sometimes there is some property that's been, we're able to sell for one reason or another. There's also the investment income. We have revenues from other agencies, so that would be any revenue received from grants or other special revenue sources, and then charges for services that are once again allowable, charges that we can charge for some of our operations. An example would be, for example, your planning and development for all of the planning and building fees. And then the next chart, which was provided to you as well, is the same information, just in a tabular manner.
No questions, and then we'll move on to question 34. What measures are included in the proposed budget to support local businesses and economic development? This is where we are looking at, again, at working on a coordinated evaluation of the current economic development program, and we'll be working through that over the summer and hope to come back in the fall with some definitive recommendations on that. Question 35 is how much is allocated for education and community services in the proposed I see there's a duplicate here on the response. I don't want to put... Can I get some clarification from the council member that asked that question? How much is allocated for education and community services in the proposed budget? Is this staff education that we're looking at, or?
Yes.
Okay. If I could ask Ms. Jackson to come up and talk a little bit about what we're doing for staff as far as training goes in the budget?
It's both. It's for education, right, staff and community services, because we do provide education to the community through the library. We provide internet education.
I see, I see the question.
We provide different.
Understand. Yes, Ms. Jackson, what's the, what's library doing for community education?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I don't have a precise number in front of me, but some of the programs that we offer at the library for education are obviously early childhood education that I spoke about last week, as well as adult education for ongoing tech classes and skill building. So all of that is typically not an additional cost to the city other than staff time. We do a lot of partnerships with community organizations as well as obtain grant funding for those, so we don't have a lot of supply costs or things like that. A lot of them are what we call internal staff-developed programs, where our staff researches and provides the educational information to our patrons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot there, I apologize. How does the proposed budget address the homelessness issue? There's no specific funding in the budget proposed to address homelessness directly. The departments have and will continue to focus on working with Santa Barbara County and the nonprofit organizations in the city to provide the services that we can, and our law enforcement side will continue with enforcement measures to help our business community with some of the challenges that they're faced with homelessness. We don't have a particular earmark for homelessness dollars at this time, but do work very closely with the county. Mr. Wu spends time with the homeless task force and has worked with the county on coming up with the current program. They received a grant, I believe, from the state of California specifically directed at the individuals who have taken shelter in the riverbed. If you want a little bit more, I can have Mr. Wu talk a little bit about that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there are city staff that commit significant time towards the issue of homelessness. In police, there are B coordinators focused specifically on homelessness efforts. There are park rangers and recreational parks that also work on homelessness efforts, as well as code enforcement, and some staffing, including myself in the city manager's office. So in terms of staff time, you can say that there are parts of the budget that are allocated towards homelessness issues. We do work closely with Santa Barbara County on efforts specifically in the riverbed, along the railroad, also efforts in working with the county on supporting Hope Village. The county receives funding, it's called the California Encampment Resolution Fund, and this is funding through the state geared towards homelessness efforts, and city and the county meets on a regular basis to provide coordination and collaboration. We usually provide information on where encampments occur, and we coordinate, again, with the county and also with the service providers, such as Good Sam and CityNet, on encampment response. So I would say indirectly, there certainly is a cost allocation because we have employees that commit time, and I would say significant time, towards this effort, but it may not be quantified in a dollar amount.
Is there a way to quantify that?
I think we can do that if we were to set aside the hours spent by employee.
I thought we had officers who were dedicated so many hours a day to that, and I think it's important for us to capture that.
We do, yes, and we can do that.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And something that you mentioned about the encampments and particularly the River Libby, it's a, it's a big one, and it's getting bigger. Has there, and, you know, some people have been asking me, we've been having a lot of conversations about this, how the River Libby, it's not Santa Maria. It's a, it's a, we have the city, we have the county in Santa Barbara, County San Luis Obispo, we have some private property, plus Caltrans, if you get close to, close to the 101. So in order for something to happen, there has to be a coordination of all of these entities, and has that, what has been the, has there been a coordination between the city and the San Luis Obispo County, or how per step have they been?
Councilmember Escobedo, you're correct. The riverbed, in terms of just jurisdictions, it's in Santa Barbara County, but a lot of it's also in San Luis Obispo County. Then there's property ownership. Property ownership, the city has some property, but there are also properties that belong to flood control, county flood control, there are also properties that are private properties. So it becomes difficult because there are different property ownerships within different jurisdictions. Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County and the city of Santa Maria are in an effort to have a memorandum of understanding for coordinated efforts, so that we are having those discussions. That MOU has not been finalized, but there's a recognition that it takes a coordinated effort. Back in April, there have been some cleanup efforts on the east side of the 101, so right along where Seaword and Magellan, in fact, that encampment has been cleared, and there have been individuals that have been moved into Hope Village and into the shelter. There's been, just within the last couple of days, some people trying to move back into the area, and so it does take that coordinated effort to make sure that though, that that particular area of the riverbed that's been cleared remains clear. There's a much larger, there are many more encampments on the west side of the 101, and that's in the future phases of the encampment response efforts later this summer.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Trying to be respectful of your request for no questions, I just want to offer this comment as an augmentation to Mr. Wu. I can share that there is a substantial amount of money that is being spent by the nonprofits in the county, at least in this county, that are working toward fighting the issue of homelessness. A substantial amount of money. So it's not just city funds that are being spent that we're concerned with here. I just want to share that there are efforts going on all the time with regard to this. United Way and others are very involved with trying to resolve this issue as an issue.
Yes, Councilman Cordero, yes, if you were to add, that there are three encampment resolution funds, there's one, two, and three, and if you add the funds together, that's directed towards North County, it's in the millions, so.
Yes.
So the reason why I ask this question is because we do get a lot of comments that make it, or the community feels that the city isn't doing much to address the issue. And I think in order for us to show that, I think we do need to show in the budget how much staff time, what resources we're using, because that does take from other resources if we're not accounting for that, and our partnerships with the nonprofits, our partnership with the county. How much money is it costing the city, and that should be allocated, because the perception for some may be that the city isn't doing enough, and if we are not doing enough, how much more can we do? And what can San Luis Obispo County do to be a good neighbor to Santa Maria in terms of cleaning their side of the river and helping Santa Maria? So that's kind of where I was getting at, because this is an important issue. I think it's inhumane to allow people to live in the riverbed like that, and we can do maybe a little more, right? So that's where my question was coming from.
Yes, I think we can capture that data to better tell that story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Question number 37 is how much of the budget percentage-wise is allocated to public safety in the 2426 budget? Approximately 85% of physical year, 80, physical year 2425 budget is allocated to public safety categories. Measure U ongoing revenues are lower than the current level of services funded by Measure U due to increases in the cost of doing business. Staff will be preparing an analysis to shift the, to shift a portion of Measure U-funded programs to the general fund to bring Measure U into compliance with the council's policies, and will provide an updated financial information to the council in quarter one financial report. We also have, what is the percentage of total budget allocated to police department? The response is 39.9%. What is the total percentage allocated to the fire department? It's 38.1%. What is the total amount of revenue, of Measure U reserves? Measure U is projected to have $4.4 million in unrestricted reserves at the end of physical year 2324. This fund balance will be fully depleted in physical year 2426 to balance the proposed budget. Why do we have reserves in Measure U? Page A1 of the 2224 budget book notes, because Measure U only has one revenue source that is impacted by the health of the economy, and it is allocated primarily to fund ongoing staffing. It is imperative to maintain a healthy reserves in the event of an economic downturn. City council has also set a fund balance goal of Measure U of 20% of total appropriations. Question 28, Measure U pays for 147 full-time equivalent positions. Please list the departments and where the 147 full-time equivalents are located. Some corrections were made after the schedules were prepared for the May 21 preliminary budget report. At this time, there are 146.8 full-time position, equivalents are supported in Measure U. In the city manager's office, in the PEG program, there is one full-time equivalent. Community Development Department, Community... Community Development Department, Community Development Department, there are seven full-time equivalents. In the library, there are 8.6 full-time equivalents. Recreation and Parks, there are 24.4 full-time equivalents. Fire has 51.8 full-time equivalents, and Police has 54 full-time equivalents. Do the 147 full-time positions equate to 20% of the total workforce? The answer is yes. 147 full-time positions is 20% of the 733.4 FTEs that we have right now. However, as noted above, some of the corrections were made, so they're a little bit off. The numbers are revised and are here. At 146.8 full-time is 20% of 732.4 full-time equivalents. Question 40 is why are the expenditures in Measure, in general fund and Measure U combined? I'm going to let Ms. Bradford address this one.
So here we are referring to some of the documents that you have seen in prior years, and so the language from the Budget Book 22-24 notes that general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. All revenues are not allocated by law or contract with agreement to specific funds are accounted for in the general fund, including Measure U. The March 2024 Measure U Citizens Oversight Committee annual report notes that to account for this funding, both revenues and expenses, staff established a separate fund to track Measure U tax proceeds and account for all Measure U-related expenditures, with any unspent tax proceeds remaining in the Measure U fund. However, it should be noted that the Measure U fund is part of the general fund and a subset thereof. So essentially, Measure U is the general sales tax, however, there are policies by the council set to account for it in a certain manner, and spend 90% towards public safety, five towards youth, and five towards quality of life. And therefore, this sub-accounting system and reporting is prepared on annual and quarterly basis.
Thank you. And the Measure U Oversight Committee, it's their job to get the annual reports, hear how the Measure U expenditures are being spent, and review them, and they will usually provide the council with a determination as to they, in their opinion, if they feel it is being spent properly. And Measure U is also, is the right word, accounted for in the, in the, when the city does its general audit. Any questions? Question 41, should Measure U be used as a supplemental fund and not a combined fund? That's a little bit more, you know, I think the council's direction is, has been what Xena has stated here in the past. You know, it's, it's a policy matter of the councils to how they want to look at Measure U. The, the allocations of their percentages were the main focus that the public was looking at. However, the policies and procedures of its actual operation, you know, still fall back on the council to make those, those decisions.
So this was, what you're saying is this was at the direction of council?
Yes.
Based on the interpretation of the ballot measure?
Yes.
Okay.
Or could have been of the discussions at the time. You know, the ballot measure is, you know, pretty specific in, in the, in what, what the percentage will be and where it should be allocated. Beyond that, it's council policy.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
No, I answered my question.
Okay.
Question 42, the proposed 24-26 biannual budget includes a recommendation to fund one-time items with projected one-time savings. What are those one-time items? So I'll let Ms. Bradford answer that one, too.
Thank you. So some of the specifics that are allocated as one-time proposed funds in the next budget is specifically $138,000 transferred to the general liability fund for appropriated reserve for contractual and professional services. 1.75 million transferred to the general liability fund for an appropriate reserve for liability claims, and 200,000 transferred to the workers' compensation fund for workers' compensation, facility equipment mitigation. In the Measure U fund, $25,000 is budgeted to repair or replace equipment fixtures for the youth center. So to note that the appropriated reserves is essentially transfer of the general fund dollars into the specific general liability and workers' compensation funds as reserves for these specific activities. They will only be spent as those expenditures occur. So this is initial seed money and considered one-time at this point, because the city would be monitoring the activities within those reserves and evaluating any future needs to appropriate additional funds or not in the future years.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask City Attorney Watson to maybe take a minute. One of the things that we did in the end of last year was to take the, the risk management component at the city manager's office and, and move that over to the city attorney's office where there is more of a, of a direct relationship with risk management, claims, lawsuits, those kinds of things. So City Attorney Watson has been faced with having to figure out a way to manage the exorbitant increases that we're seeing in insurance. I'd like him to maybe quickly just kind of recap that for you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. The council, thank you for the opportunity to describe this. We are faced with a insurmountable insurance issue, which is primarily driven by forces well beyond the control of the city. Our premium increases for this year for property, for work comp, and for liability is 49%, with an additional 49% next year. So that has driven, if, now that you have this document in front of you, that has driven our insurance premiums, if you look at the salary and supply line, from $7 million to $12 million. That unfortunately is a trend that will be continuing. As a result, my office undertook an extensive review of what would be the appropriate response for the city. We have multiple choices. We can spin off public safety, which is the primary driver. That's not going to happen. We can increase our self- retained retention, which is basically a deductible, from $250,000 for every claim, to $500,000. None of those are likely to substantially change the dramatic increase of premiums that we're seeing across state, and many of our community members are seeing just in their homeowners and other auto insurance policies. As a result, what we're trying to do is we're trying to establish a reserve now, so that over the time, as we look at the inability for us to get insurance at reasonable rates, we would have a self-insurance pool that we would manage ourselves, and only buy catastrophic expenses, catastrophic insurance. So we would buy insurance from a $5 million to a $50 million policy, instead of right now, we have insurance that, that is from seven, from, from $250 to $1 million, from $1 million to $5 million, and from $5 million to $50 million. We actually have three layers of insurance that we buy. So what we're trying to do, and, and we know that it's a hit this year, but it's a reserve, it's not an expenditure. So what we are looking at is creating a $2 million reserve in four distinct funds. One is for property damage to our vehicles and our property. One is for liability, which is, which will be at a level for claims and, and injuries to the public. One will be for work comp, which is a substantial and continually growing arena that we have. And one will be for other elements such as, we call it work comp facility mitigation, where we have facilities that are at risk to injure our, our staff. We have to do corrective work. We want to have a pool to be able to respond to those sorts of things. So what we're trying to do is be proactive. It also dovetails with why we're asking for an additional, an additional position in this year's budget. Previously, risk management was primarily a claims response team. Now it's a risk management team, and we're trying to reduce the overall costs and the overall impacts to the budget of these various things. By way of example, the staff time we have put into the FEMA items has been almost the equivalent of one FTE over the last year, just to, to process the FEMA documents and to coordinate FEMA document with the other staff members. So I'm happy to answer your questions, but that's the purpose of, of trying to do it now, because if we don't do it now, we will continue to, to be driven by premiums instead of driven by management.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
This one-time reserve allocates it to your department, right?
It allocates it to a reserve that we would use in the future. It's not an expenditure.
Right, but this means that other departments can't use that money?
That's correct.
It just sits there?
It's, it's a, it's a plan for the future.
And you're asking for, what is the amount?
1.75.
1.75?
Yes, ma'am. Otherwise, it has to come out of the next, next year's budget. At some point, it will have to come out of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Let's see here, we are now, moving on to question 43. What percentage of the budget is dedicated to infrastructure improvements? Capital maintenance and equipment projects, or CMEPs, account for 16.5% of the two-year budget for 24-26. As we mentioned earlier, we'll provide you with a list of those capital projects, so that you can take a look at the spreadsheet and see what those are. And if you have any questions, again, myself, Ms. Bradford, or Mr. Fulgoni will be available for those. Most of the capital projects are either located in public works, or utilities, or recreation and parks.
Can I request that we put with those projects whether they, if they're mandated by the state, if it's a Senate bill, whatever the Senate bill or Assembly bill, or some kind of declaration, that they are mandated by the state? I think that's really important to know. Thank you.
Thank you, will do. Question 44, or what are the major capital projects included in the budget? So you have a list of those down the way. It's very similar to the list on the other page. But you'll also see these on that, on that capital projects list. Question 45, which mostly deal with recreation and parks, I'm sorry, the prior group of questions was mostly public works oriented or utilities oriented. Question 45 is, why do we have such a big maintenance issue in parks? And parks maintenance programs over the years have really been focused on doing the basic maintenance. One of the things that you'll hear tomorrow is the assessment of the condition of our park system and individual parks. A very extensive and detailed report was completed by the Wallace Group, and gives you an idea of where the park system is today and where, where it needs to have attention paid. This study tomorrow will be a receive and file for the council. Recreation and Parks staff will be working on bringing back something to the council in the future as to how to address these, these issues. But I would say that, I hope the Public Works Director would agree with me, is that deferred maintenance is citywide. It's, it's, it's not just in parks, it's in our buildings, it's in our streets. We just have a lot to take care of and, you know, not the time or the money to, to get those things done. So we do the best we can. The strive, the, I think all the departments strive to make whatever facility they have safe. And I think that's true in, in the assessment that was done for parks. Question 46 is, did we ask to take on too much of the parks? Did the city create a park system that cannot afford to be maintained? That's a difficult question to answer, because the, as the city grows, the park acreage to population is a number that's in the municipal code, and it requires that five acres per thousand residents be set aside for parkland. We work closely with the development community to, whenever a new project is coming in, to try to address those needs. And for the most part, the development community has been really helpful in getting those things done. The trend that I'm seeing now is a little bit different with the multifamily units coming in, and the numbers of people that they bring in are different than the numbers of people that a single-family residents might, might bring in. And many of the newer developments in the apartments are providing their onsite amenities, but they still impact the park's system, you know, by having their kids play in the soccer league, or play Little League, or go, you know, take swim lessons. So everybody impacts the system. So I guess to answer your, the other part of your question is, we have, I'll speak for, for Ms. Osland here, this, we have taken great measures to use the money that we receive for, for park development to improve and expand our existing parks, so that they can meet the demand of the new residents coming into town. I think the most recent park that we built or opened was Aquist Apache? Aquist Apache Park. That park was technically supposed to happen almost 10 years ago. So, but we held off until we had accumulated the funds to do that, and then brought the project forward. So yeah, there's, there's definitely a gap there, but we're deficient now. I can't remember the number, I'm going to say it's about 150-plus acres in the five acres per thousand ratio that we have in the municipal code. So maybe something to talk about in the future. And then question 47 is how do we prevent the deficient in park maintenance from occurring again, or still, I guess? So one of the things that, again, we will be bringing back to the council as part of the, the park condition report and assessment, is to start to explore with staff at Recreation and Parks, how, what are other funding opportunities for us out there? What can we look at? Is it something that we, obviously, we exercise the grants, you know, we do a great job at grant writing and getting our grants and our projects funded. Veterans Memorial is, Public Works is finishing up phase two of that project. So there's a lot of money coming into, into the city for these projects. But the long run is that parks, general maintenance is the big issue, and we'll have to figure out a way to approach that, and we'll be back with you to talk about that. Are other departments in the same situation? Again, I'll defer to Director Fulgoni, just real quickly, if he can just touch us, touch base on where his, Public Works is responsible for all the buildings that exist in the city, regardless of what department is using them?
The short answer is yes. We've recently completed a facility condition assessment that we'll be bringing forward to council to bring light to this issue. Pretty substantial shortfall in funding for our, our city buildings as well. You'll also see that in our fleet department, the, the amount of monies that we're collecting versus the amount of monies it's costing to replace vehicles, be it a, a new mandate from the state to replace a vehicle with electric vehicle, and when we collected those monies for that vehicle, it, it, it no longer is enough to, to, to fund that vehicle. So we're, we're seeing it on all fronts, really, and we're, we're trying to come up with some creative ways to bridge those gaps.
Thank you. Let's see here. Question 49 talks about the LEAF fund. What is the total amount of reserves in the LEAF? And that, I'll let Ms. Bradford talk about that, but it is the local economic augmentation And that, I'll let Ms. Bradford talk about that, but it is the Local Economic Augmentation Fund.
So the fund balance projected at the fiscal year, at the end of fiscal year 2324, which is the current fiscal year, is approximately $10.6 million. However, due to the budget gap in both the General Fund and the Measure U in the proposed budget for 2425, there is a proposal to draw on the funds to just close the first year while the city realigns its operations to bring back the ongoing budget into balance. So 8.7 million will be drawn in 2425 as planned, leaving just about $2 million left in the LEAF fund.
Question 50 goes on to ask, the undesignated general fund reserves?
So the general fund reserves are shrinking already to some degree in 2324. This is based on preliminary projections that were developed as the budget was being developed. We are approximating that about $8.5 million would be available in the general fund unrestricted reserves by the end of the current fiscal year. And once again, those funds are projected to be depleted within the proposed budget
Question 58 says, why is there an undesignated category?
So the undesignated categories are based on the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. The unrestricted fund balance is the amount of fund balance left after determining both non-dispendable and restricted sources. So those are essentially your source or sources already, either it's a contract or a payment, you know, accounts payable outstanding. The unrestricted fund balance is the amount of fund balance that local government itself has placed unconstrained on its use, commonly reported as committed or assigned for a specific purpose. The fund balance that does not have any specific purpose is identified for its use, commonly reported as unassigned. While the unrestricted fund balance includes the committed, assigned, and unassigned classifications, the unassigned fund balance is a portion that is not committed or assigned by the city council for a specific purpose. So some of the examples of your committed or assigned funds would be funds that you have already committed for specific projects and contracts.
And then 50B was, what has happened to the funds in the undesignated category in the past two budgets? How was that money spent over the last four years? Or was it saved? Go ahead.
So it's a two-folded response. There is a resolution 202063 and 2176 that determines a calculation to determine the amount of revenues and expenditures in the general fund is calculated annually with equal shares being reserved in the general fund for pensions transferred to the Local Economic Augmentation Fund and to the Capital Projects General Fund. So those resolutions were passed by the city council as a matter of city council policy in 2018. And since then, staff has been calculating any revenues or expenditures that are one-time savings within that year, and then allocating a third towards the pensions, which helps set some funds towards that large unfunded liability, making some investments in the capital improvement program, which you just heard, there's a lot of deferred maintenance and needs in those projects. And then also setting aside some funds for the Local Economic Augmentation Fund, which is meant to support the city operations if the city or our economy as a state and a region experiences a significant downfall. That's what that fund was released up for. So since those resolutions were passed, city staff has been calculating the one-time savings above the reserve amount that was in the fund as undesignated at that time, which was approximately $10 million. So this is the first time where the city will be fully drawing on that undesignated reserves since the 2018 resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. And so many of these things became, came forward to the council as a result of the, you know, the Great Recession was the way that staff felt we could build reserves, brought it to the council, asked the council for their input, and then created these policies to be able to deal with situations like we find ourselves in in this particular budget. So again, it was foresight in the, having these reserves set aside and having a place where we can go now and help augment what we need for this next year. Excuse me. There was a question from the podium, and the question was, it doesn't seem prudent. You're adding five positions to the city attorney's office and eight in the city manager's office. How are we doing this with no money? So if you look at the little chart that we provided you here, really what we're talking about in these positions is people moving from one fund to another, or one department to another. Especially at the city attorney's office, you're seeing people move with the transferring of the positions from risk, from city manager's office, human resources, into the city attorney's office. So as the city attorney mentioned, he is looking for one new position that would assist with the risk management. But other than that, the other four positions were existing.
But those include the ARPA positions, right?
No.
No.
Okay, then why does it say ARPA additions? Or am I reading the chart incorrectly?
No, the chart, yes, that's, there are no additions in ARPA and CMO. As I mentioned earlier, ARPA ends June 30, so there won't be any ARPA positions in existence after that. So we'll note that there.
So those employees that are funded by ARPA, they're not going to be redistributed to the departments?
So we, thank you, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez. So the one, so we have had openings happen particularly in HR and in the ERP program. So some of the people who were limited-term hires under the ARPA program did apply, and some of them were picked up to fill some of these positions. Those that were not, they will end their assignment on June 30.
So that means that new positions were not created for the ARPA?
Correct.
There were positions that were already open?
Right.
They just applied for those positions?
As an example, in human resources, we had two vacancies in our human resources managers in labor relations and employee services. Those two managers left back in '23. So, '24, somewhere around there. So we had two support positions for them. Those individuals successfully promoted into those positions. That created kind of a domino effect, so their positions became open, and then people moved into those positions from some ARPA into those positions. The council authorized positions in the ERP program, which is also limited term, and some of those people chose to apply for and were successful in extending their assignment here by two years in another limited-term position. So that really concludes the questions that were asked. Just wanted to make a couple of comments and, so tonight, we're not really asking the council for any particular action. We just wanted to be able to give you some detailed answers to your questions. At the June 18 meeting, you will be considering the budget. And as we mentioned before, there is a deficit projected in the budget. We have talked broadly about the need to use the reserves for bridging the gap. And I want to point out that it's, yes, the reserves are going, probably going, probably going to need to be tapped at some point in this next fiscal year. But it's not going to be, you know, a $20 million hit immediately. We have sufficient funds that will carry us through the first several months of the fiscal year in the existing budget. In that meantime, the goal will be for the department directors to sit down and compile their plan for reductions within their departments. That plan will then be reviewed with the council, brought back to the council, and probably sometime in, during quarter two, we'll be back to talk to you with those plans. It is not an easy thing for the departments to do, but so far, all the departments understand the position that the general fund is in. And so we hope to have a good concerted effort in coming back with a plan. Part two of that would be to talk to the council about other alternatives in revenue. One of the items that you'll be looking at tomorrow will be the first phase in the user fee study to bring the user fees up to the percentage of 100%. Tomorrow will be the first introduction of that item, and then on the 18th, you'll also take action then to adopt those fees for the next fiscal year. And it's important to note that those fees are calculated into the budget. So it's not like it's going to be extra money. Those have already been accounted for. And still with that, we still have that looming deficit. So like I said, we hope to bring something to, we hope to finalize a plan in the first quarter, bring it to you in the second quarter, and implement during the third and fourth quarter of the year. And we're available if you have any questions that we didn't answer. The department directors are available. We're at your disposal.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question, I think it's probably going to go to Shad, and I think someone mentioned this before. There's going to be an obligation on the part of the city to continue to maintain the, I almost said dump, but I meant landfill, once it's closed. What is that anticipated time if you know that we're going to actually have to maintain two facilities?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cordero.
So there's a couple of things to that question. When the existing landfill out at the end of Main Street is complete, full, essentially the city will have responsibility there in perpetuity. There's landfill gas that is generated that we'll need to extract and utilize or destroy, and then also take care of the facility. So that was part of the discussion earlier this evening with the post-closure requirements. There's a separate part of our enterprise fund that's set aside to cover those costs into the foreseeable future. The second part of your question is, I believe it, is that while we are constructing the new landfill at Los Flores, we will be paying to construct a new landfill while we're still paying operational costs on our existing landfill at the end of Main Street. So there is a time where we will have essentially operations at both sites as we finish out operations at the existing landfill and then put, believe it or not, what we'd call preferential trash in the bottom of the new landfill so it doesn't puncture the liner system. So I believe that was in relation to your question.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of has to do with budget, you know what I mean? It's ongoing cost.
Correct.
Any other questions? Any answers? Okay. I have two public comments.
Madam Mayor, we do have one additional.
Any online? Any online?
No, we do not have any online.
Okay. Benjamin Ortiz, followed by Peggy Brearton, followed by Scott Branson. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Well, Mayor, hello, council members. My name is Benjamin Ortiz. I'm a resident here at District 2. So far in my career, I've worked at four different companies. At every company, time and time again, I have watched, I've watched my employer prioritize short-term gains over the well-being of the employees. Employees are worked harder and paid less, without fail. This leads to the most experienced employees leaving the company. These employees cannot be replaced. They have detailed knowledge of how things work and are responsible for passing that knowledge on to new employees. When experienced employees leave, the company begins to struggle. It may survive, but only as a shell of what it once was, what it could have been. For the customer, the consequences of this are usually minimal. Maybe the cup of coffee that we served was a little less delicious than it could be, but you can always go to another café. However, the city is, however, the city is playing the exact same game with our firefighters, where the consequences for the public are much more real. Members of this council are standing in the way of fair wages and a healthy working environment for its employees. The firefighters are underpaid. Experienced firefighters are leaving our community. As you continue to undervalue our firefighters, the more turnover we will continue to see. You are putting the lives of every single resident at risk by failing to value your employees. The money is there. Will you prioritize the safety of your city and the well-being of your citizens, of your employees? Thanks.
You obviously weren't paying attention tonight if you think the money is there, Mr. Ortiz. We have a great value for our firefighters, and we are not playing a game. Peggy Brearton, followed by Scott Branson.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, council and staff. Well, I don't even know where to begin after hearing all of that. That was quite alarming in many different levels. It still doesn't remove the fact that our firemen need fair wages. They need their average amount of money that they rightly deserve, and we need a safe community. So what do you do? I think you have to get some creative navigation going there. But just quickly, because I couldn't see, I didn't get to see all of those forms that you had up there, and I have to go review them a little bit closer, and I will. But 10% of the U, the Measure U funds that you give to, for capital projects and quality of life and recreation, unfortunately, I mean, those are wonderful programs. I use some of those programs. They're great. I think they need to be looked at, as well as all of the departments that will be looking at what they need to do to cut. This, it is always a problem when you try to catch up instead of keep up. And we see that in our infrastructure, our buildings, our streets, everything that was mentioned tonight. And this is what's happening with our fire department, but these are their lives. This is our safe, the safety to our city that needs to happen. So I don't know, I'm going to take a look at it. I'm no expert. The parks seem, and I love our parks, I think that there's maybe something to look at there. My one question was Waller Park. Is that included in our numbers? And if not, you're shaking your head, Mayor.
It's in the county.
Yeah, so maybe it can be, I don't know. But anyway, that's just a rough thought. Thank you, please, our firemen need you. We need a safe city. Please make something more happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brearton.
City council staff, picture, listen to me once again. Pardon me. I want to speak to a couple of things specific to the fire department, the budget that were mentioned. 51 full-time funded firefighters are paid for by Measure U. That's 80% of our floor workforce, 80%. When I was hired six years ago, the adopted 2023, 2024 numbers for Measure U funding-wise, that was almost our entire budget. that was almost our entire budget. That's how much money we're, we've pretty much given to the fire department, which is a good thing, but we're giving $17 million of Measure U money to the fire department instead of funding it with the general fund. It's not supplementing it. Measure U wasn't intended to have a balance. You were taxing citizens their money and putting it in the city's bank account. That, that is not okay. Talk about our pay a little bit, because we, you guys brought up our pay, our overtime, our salaries. Firefighters do not make $150,000 a year in salary. I just looked at it online. Our salary for our firefighter specifically in that rank is $76,000 to $92,000 a year top step. Where do you get that extra money? Overtime. I could talk for 30 minutes on this. What is overtime? Well, it's when we get punched out to go to fires. It's when we're forced hired and we can't go home for work. Two years ago, I was forced hired 28 times, 28 extra 24-hour shifts, almost three months of extra work. Did I wanted to go home, then I couldn't go home, and I'm getting punished for that, and it's not okay. Not to mention, 18% of, with our Master Mutual Agent Agreement, whenever we send engines out, we charge an 18% administrative fee. It used to be called the 50% fund. It's called 25% in the fund now, because we're only, the fire department only sees 25% of that money, the city keeps the rest of it. Why? I don't know. But nonetheless, we're actually making the city money. And not to mention, all of our time is being reimbursed for, and then everyone that's backfilling behind us at home is also getting reimbursed for. So when we go out to make this overtime that's portrayed poorly on us, it's actually making the city almost 20%. I don't know why, it, it seems personal, it probably isn't, but why didn't you break down the police department's pay as you did ours, rank for rank? You went through every single rank in our department, and you just said police officers. That's why the negotiations feels personal. 800 hours of our vacant positions, our 800 days just-in-current vacant positions accumulated to 20,000 hours of overtime paid out at time and a half. Crazy. Cal PERS, if you're a Pepper employee, I am, I'm mandated to pay 50% of the actual cost, which is 15% of my paycheck. I have no choice. It's $1,100 a month for me currently, and if I do that for 30 years, I'll pay almost a half a million dollars. Give 400, $400,000, $500,000, if my pay stays status quo. So it's not just the city. I, I, there's just a lot down the back here. You know, why, why are we setting reserves from the general fund when we have a budget deficit? 20% reserves? You don't put money in your bank account until you pay your bills. Nobody does. Why are we doing that? If you have, if you have a $17 million budget deficit coming up, pay your bills before you put money in the bank. You're creating the budget deficit. You're taking away the money that was made to run the city, and you're putting it into the bank account before you're taking care of your responsibilities. It's not okay. There's lots of answers to things here. My wife and I run a business. This is not something that's new to me. I would never not pay my bills or my employees before I put money into my bank account. I wouldn't be in business. You guys can do better. I have faith in you. Please do better.
Thank you, Mr. Bramson. Any other questions, comments from the council? Mr. Posada, anything left?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, thank you for listening. If you do have any questions between now and probably next week, I'm looking over at the city clerk's office, when the agenda will be ready for the 18th.
Yes, the agenda will be posted for the 18th on the 14th, Friday the 14th.
So any questions we get, give us a couple of days to answer them, too. Prior to that would be, would be helpful so we can provide you that information on the 18th.
You know, I really want to thank you, Mr. Posada. I want to thank our staff that spent the weekend, I know, working on this, so that we get all the answers, because this took a lot of preparation. But thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, my God.